And I think I'm live. Hello, hello, everybody. Welcome to a special Saturday night session where I'm jumping back on to finish up just a handful of readings that I did not get to today. And I'm back on earlier. My praying mantis session was a lot of my praying mantis members are out doing different things. And so we didn't have anyone there. So I did my little readings and did some stuff, but we finished early. So I'm back on to finish up these readings. And then I'll be back tomorrow. You'll notice that there is no chat in the session. I'm not taking any new questions. If you check the description box of the video, you'll see just the kind of I think there's seven, seven readings that I'll be doing. It has the order. There'll also be a pinned comment at the end when I'm done. So you can just click on that and get into your readings. So we're gonna jump right in. And up first, we have Supernova, so Nova Rodriguez. We have your free reading here and let's jump in that. And so he wanted to know, oh, it's funny. When I was eating in between sessions, I was checking my Instagram and one of the people I follow, they had a quote from Kurt Cobain, which says, I forget what it was, oh, if even if you're paranoid that someone's watching you, it doesn't mean that they're not. So it was funny. I was like, hey Kurt. So Kurt gave a little shout out through that too. And I love this. So he said, what does Kurt want you to know about the connection that you share with him? Since he's a guide and all, does he have any advice? Should you keep going with music and writing and creating? And how will he help you? All right, let's take a look here. See what we have here. Of course, we'll see what we have come through with two cards. But we'll take a look here and see what they have coming in here. Yep, the devil and the star. I love it. So we do have the star card, which is about dreams come true and being a star, right? And the devil card, which is about cutting away thoughts and beliefs and mindsets that don't serve anymore. And that, you know, to cut away the limitations, to cut away the expectations. So they bring a lot of clarity towards what the dream is. And so I like this connection that you guys share because, you know, when we're talking about that, they're your spirit guide in this lifetime, which is like, wow, you know, this person that did shine very bright for everyone. Well, in, in their lifetime, you were there, you know, source of inspiration like they are for you. And and a shining star and they had a special connection with you. And then also you guys as spiritual team. You guys do our part of a soul. It's like all of the, he's showing like all of these stars here. It's like, um, all of you take turns shining bright in different lifetimes. But it's like, if you have this group of like nine stars, nine spirit beings, and you rotate through, being a focal point in different lifetimes. And sometimes you all come down as a giant group and you all travel together and create music or create creative energies. But I feel like you guys do have for many lifetimes. Excuse me. Sorry, for many lifetimes, had musical troops and created music and created things together. But you guys like hanging around. And but there's other lifetimes where one person goes down and everyone supports that person in different ones. In this lifetime, what we've talked about that you will come across a couple, two or three of your star group here in physical form as, as other musicians that will create some wonderful music together and interactions together. So you will, and you will know them. You'll have the sense of family, the sense of connection with them too. So you've got this strong connection with all of those that you will experience for all of these. Any advice that he gives on music with this devil card is cut the expectations, don't try to duplicate what other people are doing, or think that there's a certain way you have to do it. Do as you've been doing and follow your heart. Allow yourself to express and, and just allow that to fill you up. And, you know, like this bowl, fill up and overflow. Don't try to, you know, I gotta do it this way. Stay out of your head and get into your, and stay in your heart like you have been. And I like that for you. He'll continue to give you energy. They all will. All of your spiritual posse, you have all these musicians. That's their talents that they've had throughout lifetimes, you know, like you were in other lifetimes. They're all helping you by inspiration and, and they will flow emotion through you and through a mental, you know, they're gonna give you mental ideas. Just drop things in that you can be like, wow, I wanna do that. But you don't have to do anything. They're just gonna give you mental inspiration, emotional inspiration, energetic inspiration, sparks, uh, physical inspiration of things in the outside world. And whatever you do with it is up to you. There's no expectations with it, but they will help you. And then whatever you ask of them too, you can ask them to, you know, I need some inspiration. Can you guys show me something? And they will. But they really honor your power of your own creativity. And, you know, all these people that are recognizing going, do you realize that you have this Nirvana thing? It's, it's Kurt going, he's letting influencing their emotional and energetic ears to go, do you know you sound like Nirvana? You have a, like a taste of Nirvana? You go, yeah, I know. Kurt Cobain is one of my spirit guides, you know, you can even just jokingly say it or seriously say it. People are like, what? Yeah, he's one of my spirit guides. And so sometimes I do feel like there's influence that comes through from him. And they'll be like, what? Shut up. No way. So I love that for you. Right? So that's what they have for you Nova Nova. So many blessings to you. All right. And then Raj, uh, KK10, you are up. Let's grab your timestamp here. So Raj, um, so do we see marriage between you and Jas Karan? I probably murdered that up. My apologies. In the future, let's see, based on current energies. Let's see here. We do have the High Priestess and the Hira Fund, two major Arkana here. But, you know, I, the High Priestess, the, which they call the revealer here, she's no more for going away by herself, going up into a high priestess tower and being by oneself. And, and, you know, learning and connecting to the spirit world, looking behind the veil, diving deep into their own emotions. And then the Hira Fund here is about our higher self, bringing clarity and showing us higher truths and, you know, more study and teaching and again, the revealer brings revelations as well. So I don't feel like that right now, the energy is more focused on you withdrawing and gleaning and seeing things from a different perspective, from a higher perspective. So I don't feel like marriage is directly in the path right now. There is a diff, you know, there's this realm of possibility that comes in with this. But based on current energy, it feels like they're more focusing on you stepping away and understanding your own emotions, your own self, and seeing things differently, letting go of old expectations, old ways of thinking. Very transformational energy with those two. And then we can see what happens on that on the other side of it. But it's like, based on current energies, it's like, you're not on the trajectory to be married. But after you go through this transformation, there will be changes that you will make because with new information, new awareness, you do change your path, which then could, and we can look at it afterwards. But right now, based on current energies, I don't see marriage between you two right now. Right? So that's what they have for you Raj. So many blessings to you. Right? Right. And then Michael, you are up. So will your ex and you reconcile soon? No contact. Right. Based on current energies, let's see what they have happening here. Is there reconciliation? All right, you know, with the, you have the Keeper of Wands, which is the Queen of Wands and the Nine of Swords. Nine of Swords is nightmare and insomnia and a lot of small teachers, our thoughts and beliefs and mindsets. Small teachers rooted in fear, a lot of expectations that suck the life out of relationships, right? Keeper of Wands, the Queen of Wands, does talk about, you know, there's this realm of possibility. But the Nine of Swords is what stands in between it. And what I mean by that is like, in order for there to be reconciliation, we can't keep doing what we've always done and expect a different result. Well, cause we'll continue to do what we've always did and get what we've always gotten. So if, with this energy, it's like realizing that I can look at my thoughts and beliefs and mindsets. What mentalities, what expectations do I have around love and relationships? That I can let go because in freeing myself from this long list of supposed to be and should be and need to be, that's when I can have successful relationship because when we have expectations, we'll focus on what something's not being. And then we get more because our energy is focusing on that lack. We get more of that lack. But the more we let go of expectations, the more energy we have about abundance and gratitude. Cause you know, when we meet someone, right? They give this and we have no expectations. Look at how, wow. You know, so much amazement of who someone is, right? We're just like, wow, you got, you're awesome. Cause there's no expectations. They are awesome, right? And then let's say we start getting interested and we spend time around our expectations around them. These rules of bound our belief about what they should be doing, what they should be saying. And we start dating and there's more rules that come in. The more supposed to be should be's. And then we get engaged and they're, see how smaller they're becoming? Then we get married and for some reason we're like, why did they are so much less? Why did they change? But people don't change. It's our expectations around people that change, right? And so this is when we, it takes so much, you know, if we have these expectations, it takes so much just to get up to zero. And then to move above that, that that's why, you know, usually like when I go to weddings and stuff, I'll put in there, remember why you fell in love and try to keep your expectations as low as possible so that you can experience abundance in your life. And I feel like that's what needs to happen here. If there is ever to be reconciliation, I don't feel like soon. Cause there's no way. It would take a miracle for all of these expectations and fears on both sides to be dropped. Cause if one of you does it, let's say you do it and they don't, you're gonna still end up, you know, your vibration higher, there's lower. They're gonna bring in lower vibration and there's not gonna be a vibrational match, right? So when we're both in lower vibration, we're gonna get low vibration experiences when we're, one person's high, one person's lower, it's gonna drag the other person and it's gonna make, no, I don't wanna go there. So I feel like spirit is saying more with this Queen of Wands, you know, roll over your energy. Realize that, let me focus on what did I learn about myself in this? What expectations can I release so that I can move forward? And, you know, whatever's meant for me won't pass me by, but I don't feel reconciliation is in the cards right now, based on current energies between you guys. Unless there's significant changes made on both sides. But in the meantime, you work on you. You get to release the things that don't serve you anymore and glean of what you learned about yourself through it. And then that could put you in a higher vibration for a higher vibrational relationship. But I don't see reconciliation right now. I'm sorry, hang in there. I know those are always fun. So many blessings to you. All right. Okay, then Patsy A, you are up. So hey, Patsy. So what is the overall energy, energy surrounding your love life right now? You're single. Yay. Always fun, right? Just letting everyone know, Patsy's single. No, I'm just kidding. Leave her alone. So let's see here, what energy, all right, surrounding love, your love life right now. So you do have here, let's see what both of these are. Wow. Okay. I like it. You have the Crown of Wands and the Keeper of Wands. This is the King and the Queen of Wands. I like it. Whenever we're asking about a love reading and you get both the divine masculine, divine feminine, these are divine counterparts. They're of the same energy with the Wands energy. The, the King also has mental air energy. The Queen also has emotional cups energy behind the scenes. But they have this passion, this excitement, this fire energy that's in common here. And so you do have a divine counterpart that's out there. So that's good. That just does tell you that there is a, a divine faded relationship that you do have, that will come your way, one way or another. Sooner or later, that's out there. And what I mean by that is in some, some lifetimes, we do have, no matter what paths we take and all the choices, we'll have a faded relationship that spans across our entire, all possibilities. Just a matter, it kinda goes more like this. Because there's some paths that will bump into them earlier. There's other paths will bump into them later. And, you know, even the amount of time it could, you know, one path can be this and one can be this. Where we're only with it for a shorter period of time. And so it's all about ranges. Some lifetimes, there's not someone that's all across. There's this person, nothing in here, someone here, someone here, someone here, different people we could run into and have different relationships with depending on our choices. But when I get this, this is really very much a divine faded relationship with someone. Uh, and I like this. Now the energy surrounding this, um, all this fire energy. I do feel here cause all this flamey fiery energy. You know, twin flame energy is, is rare, is rarer than we think. Cause it's everyone's definition of twin flame energy, right? From spirit, what they told me is like a twin flame, we have a lot of people who are soulmates. It could be friends, family, whatever. We're all souls. We're all mates. And, and some can be stepping stones that help prepare us for a soul partner. Someone we end up with, with, for the rest of our lives, right? Which, you know, this is the synergy I'm feeling for this one is someone you end up with the rest of your life. But a, a twin flame is someone like Bloodsport with, with Jean-Claude Van Damme, where you tie each other together by your fists and you wrap your hand and dip it in glue and dip it in glass. And you're fighting each other. There's a lot of passion. There's a lot of heat. There's a lot of work though. But this doesn't feel like this. This feels more harmonious than the twin flame. Cause that's like taking the double amount of college courses. It's a lot of work, a lot of progress. We don't do it a lot because it's exhausting. So, but I feel like this is not like that, but it's a beautiful joined energy. Fire sign, are you a fire sign? Cause that would make sense if you both are fire signs. But there's a lot of fire, a lot of passion between the both of you, a lot of activity. I feel like they love to travel. They like to, you know, like this, they're very beautiful, handsome. With this fire energy too. So your energy really draws, draws you guys together. So I do feel like that is what they want you to know right now. Can always dive in deeper and find out more about who this person is in other readings as well. I do also offer relationship readings if you're interested, all that information's in the description box too. But no pressure, just information. But we can always start doing a free reading and gather and see what little tidbits. It's like a scavenger hunt. What little more information can I find out about them? You know, and we can ask spirit and see what they reveal, but they don't wanna do like, here's the, their background check and you have everything you know about them. That's boring. It's always about the adventure with spirit, right? Right. So that's what they have for you, Patsy. So many blessings to you. All right. Bring the rest of these over here. All right. And so those were from the evening session. And then from the morning session, we do have Yash Vijay. So Yash, hopefully I'm not destroying your name too much. My apologies. So, and thanks for being a new subscriber to the channel. So from India, hello, you're probably asleep right now. So what's coming in love for you? Well, maybe not. Maybe it's the morning over there, right? So what's coming in for love in the near future for you? A breakup situation with your partner. All right. Let's take a look here. What's coming in love for you in the near future? Let me shuffle these one more time here. So what's coming in love for you in the near future? These two. All right. Well, it looks like here with the Temperance card, the Temperance card is a card of patience and alchemy. You do have the Keeper of Swords. The Keeper of Swords is the Queen of Swords, which she's a balancer between head and heart. And I feel like, like love in the near future is like on pause. Cause there's this working out, this balancing between the mind and all its supposed to be's and should be's. And, you know, mental energy and then the heart, there's this balancing that needs to kinda happen and unfold. And giving you time to reflect a lot on who you are, what is it that you want? What have you learned through your relationships, this breakup? What are you realizing about yourself? What mirror, you know? Cause every partnership, every relationship, friends, family and whatever, and lovers especially, are these mirrors showing us what we wanna see about ourselves. And we grow through relationships. And so before we go into another one, trust me, I would, I, I was a serial monogamist. I'd go from relationship to relationship to relationship. And wondered why I kept ending up in a relationship with the same person in someone else's body. I kept on ending up with the same teachers, showing me what I wanted to see about myself until I saw it. And so it's good to take a break in between. Had I known this before, probably someone, probably people told me, why don't you take some time before you find, oh, look at, there's someone else, you know? But it's good to take some time to reflect so that you can grow from it, so that you don't have to keep repeating the same relationship with someone else. Cause wherever we go, there we are. And we will always have those teachers showing us what we wanna see about ourselves until we see it. And so it's important for you to take time with that temperance card, just to kind of ruminate and transform and understand what fears were coming up, what expectations you were having that were disappointing. What things can we release? What kind of changes can we make in, in? What kind of relationship do we want with ourself? And do we want with someone else? Cause all of our relationships are a reflection of how we feel about ourselves. So if this doesn't change, neither will the reflection that we look in the mirror, right? So hopefully that helps a little bit there. That's what they have right now for you. So many blessings to you. Right? And then Sean G, hello, my dear. Thank you again for your donations earlier today. So your free question is what positive things can you look forward to this month? All right, let's see here. What does spirit wanna share with you? What's coming your way here? Cause everything can be positive, right? Cause everything in the outside world has no meaning. It just is until it gets in this little noggin. And then we define positive, negative, good, bad, you know, better, worse. When spirit looks at everything as different and exciting. That brings different, you know, energies. But there's not right or wrong from spirit standpoint. So when we look at that, they're like, what? Oh, that's interesting how humans look at things, right? So you do have the lover's card. So there is some important relationships that are coming forward this month with the lover's card. And, you know, there is this, can be romantic, it could be romantic interest. But the main thing is that it's about relationships of all kinds. You know, reconnection with family, a connection with a best friend. But it's about a lot of focus on that there's a lot of things that you can find here in relationships. I like the lover's card too, because it's the power of emotional choice. Coming back into every moment, I choose what emotion I feel. I choose what story I put to it too. So I can look at, there's like positive things happening every moment, if I want to see them that way. But I can also, if you've ever had like debate, kinda club or whatever in high school or whatever, middle school or whatever, growing up and they were like, you know, so this is, this is the point of view I want you to take. And then you're like, all right. So you read it and you're like, this is okay. I know, I'm gonna debate and take this stance. And then in the middle of the debate, they're like, ding, all right, now switch opinions. And you're like, what? And then you have to go against the, what you were going before and choose the other side and then focus that. It shows our power of choice and it's amazing thing that teaches us the concept that I get to choose the story. I get to choose my point of view, but I can change it at any time too. And I like this. I feel like that is a gift of that I could choose to say something's positive, then I'm gonna choose to be that it's a negative. And vice versa, I can go, you know what? I'm gonna look at this as a bad thing, but then I'm gonna switch it and look at it as a good thing. It's our power, right? You also have the proclaimer, the Hira Fund. You get a lot of this teacher student energy, a lot, which of course, cause you're a teacher, you teach art, right? But I love this energy for you because this is some great things coming in from the experiences being a teacher and the impact you see on some students. I just feel like over these next, you know, rest of this month, that you just are kind of pleasantly surprised with some, what, really? And, you know, people, students sharing things about your impact on them and, and parents telling you the difference they see in their children. And I just feel like these are good things that feel good because that's your heart. You're wanting to help people. And I feel like you do get that feedback and cause sometimes, you know, of course, teachers don't get all the praise that they deserve. They usually get that, why ain't you doing this? And me, 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 me. And we're like, oh my God. Everyone should have to be a teacher for a year of their life. So they'll te, they'll treat teachers better, right? So a couple of little things I feel coming in there for you, Sean. So that's what they have for you right now, my dear. So many blessings to you. All right. And then Tim Alajem, you are up. So Tim, Tim. So your journey continues. It's amazing what you find out there, right? Some gems of vehicles and then other times, what? Why is that even allowed to exist anymore? Isn't that a, a, a fire hazard, right? All right. So you wanted any guidance from spirit? On whether your ex-girlfriend will balk at coming for the rest of her things? Six tons? My gut feels is that she is broke, but I can't make anyone stay loyal. No anger, bad childhood, right? Yep. It's an amazing awareness when we realize I can't control anyone else's actions. But I'm not responsible for anyone else's actions or choices either. Only my own, that beautiful self empowerment, right? So let's take a look here. So if you contact them saying, hey, I have a gift for you if you'd like to come pick it up. Let's see what we got here. Well, amazingly enough, with the four of cups, there is a, a lot of emotional stability in that moment. And the Ace of Swords is with a new way of communicating, right? Communicating from a higher, you know, uh, from a place of unconditional love and joy and laughter and peace. Maybe not so much joy and laughter with, with that situation, but it is a higher vibrational. Instead of, you know, hey, when? Instead of, you know, hey, wench, come pick up your stuff, you you lying, cheating, no good, blah, blah, blah. Of course, that would never bring a good. A response, it'd be a reaction, probably a nuclear reaction. You see the, the little mushroom cloud from over where they live, but um, you know, I feel like. You know, there's this, um. I would like kind of plan out your communication. Whether it's gonna be a phone call or a text or an email or whatever. And you can just let them know, hey, you know, I'm. I sold my house and I'm having to clear everything out. Um, would you like to come pick up your stuff or? Um, you know, do you want me to trash it, donate it? Um, or what would you like to do with it? You know, would you like to come pick it up? Give them that off option first. Or do you want me to donate it or? Um, so just, it's like, it's almost like reminding me of uh, one of my exes had a. When I was dating them, they had a two-year-old son. They would get into it because. They would say, what do you want to drink? And then, of course, it's always gonna be soda when you ask a child what they wanna drink. Soda, and they're like, no. You want um, juice? And they, they'd have a tantrum because. You just offered them something and then told them they can't have it. That's not gonna go over well for any of us, right? So I was like, just intuitively, I'm like, instead, just go. Hey, would you like, would you like to have juice or would you like to have milk? And they're like, uh, juice. Always went well and they were always amazed. I'm like, you give options, then they feel like they have a choice, right? And, um, and so that's what you can present it here. Now that she's a two-year-old, but you're speaking to that inner. Child of theirs that's gonna, right, activate. So it's like going, would you like to pick it up? Or would you um, like to um, for me to donate it? You know, what would you like to do? I'll leave it up to you. And if they're like. I'll just donate it or, well, I'll come and see what I wanna take and then you can donate the rest or whatever, you know? Um, but I feel like that, it feels like with the four of cups, it feels very emotionally stable right now, so it's a good time. And the Ace of Swords is all about how you communicate and being aware of it. So I feel, I feel good about it here, Tim. Again, without your, you know, um. No anger. Um, but there still is feelings there, obviously, right? That you're working through. So trying to approach it from a place and communicate from a higher place of unconditional love. Like you're speaking to the little hurt inner child of them would be a good idea and I like that, um, for you. Alright, so that's what they have for you, Tim, Tim. Uh, so that's, that's it. That's all we have for this evening. I'll be back again tomorrow at eleven AM out in time, uh, tomorrow also. Whatever I don't finish my two-hour session, I do come back in the evening. To finish out all of the other, uh, whatever I don't get to in the first two hours. So if you'd like to join me then, uh, look forward to seeing there. Until then, remember every second of every day of your lives. You truly are eternally and unconditionally loved by the mother and the father of both things, our creator. Of course, I love you too. So until I see you again, much love, hang in there, take care of yourselves, remember. Have some fun cuz why are we being so serious, right? Alright, everybody, I love you much. We'll see you soon.